...City Council Meeting of March 18th to order. Stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with open meeting law and herein place all agenda items on the table for discussion. I believe we did need to make one change to item 9C to introduce ordinance number 14, which was left at your seat, rather than what is listed.
Yes. Yes, correct. Council President, the resolution, it should be an ordinance, and because it's an ordinance, it will only be introduced tonight so that it can receive the proper publishing time and discussion before the next, before it's finalized.
What's the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of March 4th, 2019, and the regular meeting of March 4th, 2019, approve.
Motion to approve the minutes of our March 4th meeting of the City Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining. I wasn't here, so I can't solidify it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 100220 through 100290 totaling $189,164.46, approve. What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Storey to approve. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes, awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations. We have none. Consent agenda. Animal control report, February 2019, receive. Application for exempt permit, raffle, Friends of Linden Hill, approve. Building report, January 2019, receive. Fire report, February 2019, receive. Great River TV Rules and Regulations Amendment, receive and approve. Heritage Preservation Commission Minutes, March 2019, receive. Housing and Redevelopment Authority Minutes, February 2019, receive. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, January and February 2019, receive. Planning Commission Minutes, January, February, and March 2019, receive. Sale of fireworks permanent structure license, Coburns, Inc., approve. Waste water report, February 2019, receive. Water report, February 2019, receive. Water supply plan, 2019, approve. What is the wish of the City Council?
Motion to approve the consent agenda 6A through 6M, either to approve or receive as documented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing. We begin with a public hearing, correct?
Correct. So, before you tonight, we have Resolution 2019-24 in a public hearing to approve the expansion of tax increment district number 40 with ABS Supply. We have Carol Anderson from Community Development, Jason Murray from David Drown Associates, and then the owners of ABS for, to talk about the project.
Good evening again, Carol Anderson from Morrison County Community Development. I'm here this evening to reintroduce ABS to you. They, if you remember, last year, they built 12,000 square foot building, and since, and they have eight employees, and since then, they had the opportunity to acquire another business, and they have to add another 11,000 square feet onto their building. And so, they would be adding another two employees, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to them, and they can tell you all the good things that have happened to the business in the last year.
Hello, I'm Jason Johnson. I'm one of the owners here with Shannon Martenson of ABS Supply, and about a year ago, we were here to move into the community. With your help, we did so, and first of all, I'd just like to say it couldn't be a better fit for all our employees and everyone that's here. It's been fantastic, and we now are very excited because we have a new opportunity to bring in a new product line, new business, and hire new people to do this. To do this, we need another acre land that we need to purchase from the city and get some tax. Tax helps to do so, but this opportunity will set us up for growth. It's, it's really a great opportunity that we have to do this. We'll be offered an exclusive for a line of product that doesn't really exist right now, so it's, it's great for us and the community. Our average wages right now are between, for our employees that we've hired here, between $22 and $23 an hour. That's the type of jobs that we will be creating. We do offer retirement plans and supplemental insurance as well, and so those are the type of positions we want to create more of in this town. Would you like? Sure. What we are is really ABS Supply is an industrial distributor, and we specialize, we are a niche player. We specialize in sandblasting supplies and equipment. We do work all over the Midwest and really in eight state region. We shipped, we've shipped to every state in the United States, but primarily in the upper Midwest is where we work, and it's blasting anything from bridges to water towers to working with John Deere, and we've got our newest project going in. We're super excited in Glenwood, and it's a fully automatic robotic blast room, you know, turnkey project, working on blasting parts for aircraft, and it's, it's completely unmanned, and it'll all be done with robots. It's, it's like a pilot project we're doing in conjunction with a company out of Texas, and they're billing this in Minnesota as a, as their first heralded. It'll be a flagship project for both of us. So, that's the type of stuff that we're doing and expanding, and this new product goes along with that. It's the type of media that is, it's an imported media garnet abrasive for both blasting and water jet meeting. So, because of our connections in the industry, we've been given an exclusive to this product line, but we will need to add significant warehouse space to pull this off, and we will be stocking somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 semi-loads of product at any one time in our warehouse, and that's really the, what's driving the need for the additional employees and for the additional warehouse space that we're going to be adding.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for me?
These new jobs that you're creating, they're going to be probably the same hourly wage as what you currently have?
Absolutely. Our company philosophy is, we've always, always maintained and will be that we pay above industry average for everything because we feel turnover is the biggest death of anything. When we hire someone, we want to maintain, we want to hire good quality people and maintain them, and we're willing to pay, you know, above industry average for that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Jason Murray, David Drown Associates. Tonight, you're, you're holding this public hearing for the expansion or modification of Tiff District number 40. As Carol alluded to, it was created last year to help ABS with its original expansion. The key components, there's really two key components with this modification. We're modifying the existing Tiff District to add another parcel, add a third parcel into this Tiff District to accommodate the expansion, and then we're modifying the original budget. And again, all this budget does is guides the city in the use and expense of increment over the life of the Tiff District. Again, this is an economic development Tiff District, so, so this is a nine-year economic development life, and this budget will guide those expenditures. Expenditures for the original Tiff District was identified as site, some of the site improvements and land acquisition. My assumption, and you'll see the development agreement at a later meeting, but my assumption is you'll have a similar expenditure happening with this modification of this Tiff District to allow the expenditure for land acquisition and then some site improvements, infrastructure development, so. With that, council, it's really just those two, two key points. There's some additional language in that in the Tiff District that we have to have, but highlighting only those two, two key points in this modification, so. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, at 7:40, we'll open the public hearing. That's where we'll take public comment pertaining to the tax increment financing district. Does anyone wish to speak? Does anyone wish to speak? Would anyone like to speak to it? Hearing no comments, we'll close the public hearing at 7:41. What is the wish of the City Council?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-24, approving tax increment financing plan for ABS Supply.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Goschek for Resolution 2019-24. Is there any comment? Discussion?
Mr. President, I would just comment that we're fortunate that ABS chose Little Falls to land. We appreciate that. You brought good jobs, you brought activity out to our industrial park area, and it seems to continue to keep tagging on and growing out there, so thanks for what you do, and I appreciate it.
Ding, resolution. Call the roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Storey?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries.
Old business, restrict parking, Fourth Street Northeast, tabled from 3/4/19. Greg in chief.
Yeah, so in front of you, you've got basically the council, or the memo, as well as the letter and sample letter that were sent out to the residents along the Fourth Street Northeast Project. At the last meeting, Mr. Storey pointed out that we do not currently allow in our ordinance a three-hour parking restriction, so we can have the discussion tonight, but if it is the desire for the council to allow that three-hour parking along Fourth Street in that one block stretch, we would look to table this as we were likely going to want to update the parking ordinance. There's some other things in the parking ordinance we'd like to tweak as well pertaining to winter parking mostly, but this would be one thing that we would like to update in there as well. So, for that, we'll open it up to the council for, for discussion. Recommendation from, from staff would be a three-hour parking, but we're open to, to options that the council would like to, to see as well.
Mr. President, point of order, it says in here in our minutes that this is tabled at our last, at our last meeting, I believe, according to the rules. In order to bring this back off to the table and open it up for discussion, it would call for a two-thirds majority vote.
I'm not sure, John.
I, I believe it should have been postponed.
Not tabled.
Not tabled. Postponing would then, and postponing to, to this meeting, and since we've included it on the agenda and adopted the agenda as, as presented, that it is open for discussion if there's going to be a motion made. I think what Mr. Kimmon was alluding to is if we wanted to postpone it a further time to, to await for the ordinance, to address the ordinance issues and that you had spoken about before, noting that our ordinance doesn't specify three-hour parking, and if we wanted to address those concerns first, we could move to postpone it to a later date so that we could address the ordinance issues. I would advise if we are going to do it on that piece, we, we recall ordinances take a two-meeting cycle to process because we have to introduce the ordinances first per our charter, state statute mandates that we publish the ordinances for at least 10 days before they are approved. Our timeline between the meetings is, is more, more than 10 days so that we, our introduction and then approval would meet that state statutory requirement. So, if we are looking to postpone this and align it with parking, the earliest would then be the second meeting in April.
That would be the earliest, yes. We'd probably want to pass the planning commission, I would presume, but yes, that would be the earliest.
Mr. President, I, I, I want to entertain the motion to table this. If we table it, we don't have to set a date on it. We can bring it back off the table for discussion with a simple two-thirds majority vote. This way, we're not tying our hands with trying to get something done. I've talked to Dr. Grams with this, and he's, he's possibly looking at maybe changing his request to make it a little more simpler and keep it where we don't have to deal with law enforcement. It would be pretty much done with them by the, there because they would, he's interested in just kind of having it during his hours of, when he's open, so they would actually be doing the, the policing of it themselves because once they're not there, we're not restricting other members of the community to a parking ordinance.
Well, the current signage we have is Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, right?
No.
No? What, 9? I looked at your sign with you. What does it say? 7? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Storey, meet a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Storey, when you table, when you table something, then you pick it up later on in the same meeting. When you postpone it, then it comes up at a different meeting. That's the difference between tabling and postponing.
I believe when I read into the, into Robert's rules, now, I don't, I don't, I don't think the city has any separate things in their bylaws or constitution or in the state, but you can, you can table something without putting a date on it or picking it up later on in the meeting. It just takes a two-thirds of a vote to bring it back up at a later time.
And I believe our charter says we're guided by Robert rules, Robert's rules, but we...
Council President, our, our discussion about tabling, postponing language came from our attorney, I believe, at a meeting towards the end of last year, where there, he, his clarity to us, and I'm, I'm going off of that, that opinion at the time, was that tabling is indeed for action items during, that are going to take place during the meeting. If you wanted to table something and move it to a later point in the meeting, or just that it would, that, that measure would take place within the meeting if we are going to postpone. There is the postpone to a late, a defined date, or there is postponing indefinitely, which could, could set that, that time that Councilmember Storey addressed, so.
Well, there, there is another option. We could vote this down, and we could always bring up the motion to reconsider at a later date, which would also require a two-thirds motion to bring it back up. By just voting this, by a simple no vote on this right now, then we could, it could be brought up under a motion to reconsider.
And our, and our processes on issues, items that are brought, voted down, it is usually a voting member of, a person that voted it down would need to propose it as an, as an item to be brought back up.
Either way, the way I see it, we need to fix, we either need to fix our signage or fix our ordinance, right?
Greg and I have spoken about, or we've discussed that we do need to sit down and probably do, make some changes to the parking ordinance. There needs to be some clarity with winter parking and probably with the downtown area. We need to look at standardizing some of the language in the ordinance.
So, Greg, if this is taken to the planning commission, which you made remark, it would be.
True.
The next planning commission meeting is set about three weeks from now.
Correct.
And then after that, we'd have to wait another two weeks in order for it to be presented to the council for their acceptance of the ordinance change. So, that's five weeks out.
Well, yeah, it's five weeks out. I mean, we could have it at the next, the second meeting in April would be the first reading on it, and then it would be, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, it could be the second, second meeting in April.
Okay, second meeting, okay.
Well, but we would have to have it in order, so that would be two, so it would be the first meeting, second meeting in April and the first meeting in May enacted if we chose to enact it that direction.
Which would give us time.
Did we actually have a motion? I, I thought, Mr. Storey said, I'd like to entertain, or we should entertain. I don't know that, did I hear a motion in there?
Don't remember.
Well, if there was, I will withdraw that motion to table, and I'll wait and see what other motion comes up.
If it was with instruction from our attorney, I would vote to postpone indefinitely, or I would make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
And I would second that.
Motion by Mayor Zilka to postpone indefinitely, second by Councilmember Goschek. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item B, restrict parking, Second Street Northeast, 30-minute parking.
Yeah, so, we received a request from Domino's Pizza. Mr. Cole is here as well in regards to an additional 30-minute parking stall in front of his place of business. We sent out, I believe it was 12 resp, or 12 letters to the property owners. We received three back. You can see in the memo, the various businesses that indicated which, what their response was to it. It was interesting that, if you recall, about a year or so ago, EEI requested handicapped parking spots on, in front of their business there, so we replaced one of the 30-minute parking stalls with, with a handicap stall. They've since responded with, from this letter here and indicated that they don't use that handicap parking stall. It's too difficult for their bus to, to be able to get in and load and unload passengers, and so they, they actually suggested replacing, putting that sign back to a 30-minute parking stall. And so, when we got responses back from, EEI was the first one to respond. When we got responses back from the other two individuals, I asked what their take was on it, and the one, Reality Roasters, had indicated they would be okay with, with that one being an additional 30-minute parking stop, but they didn't want one in front of their business as a 30 minutes. So, tonight, our recommendation would be to replace that handicap with a 30-minute parking stall to go back to the two that were there previously, which would give an additional 30 minutes in front of or near Domino's Pizza.
So, what would be the wish of the City Council?
I motion, make the motion to accept the, or to authorize the handicap sign from being taken down and reestablished with a 30-minute parking sign.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Storey, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Discussion?
Would that be acceptable?
It, it doesn't, it, it doesn't address what, what the petitioner requested here.
The, I, I'm not exactly sure where the handicapped one is. Is it right next door?
Right around the corner.
Oh, so it's around the corner.
No, no, it's the next parking spot further south from the existing 30-minute parking.
So, it'd be closer to Pete Joyce.
Correct. So, going from the corner...
But it's adjacent to it.
It's adjacent to the existing 30-minute parking spot. Right. But not adjacent to the petitioner's property.
Okay.
If I, if I may, so going from the corner, it goes handicap parking stall, 30-minute parking stall, and then there's a sign for three-hour parking from there on, on out. We could replace that handicap with a 30-minute, or we could add another 30 minutes and move the, the three-hour farther down. The recommendation that we have, and I think that's what the motion is, is to replace the handicap that's on the corner with that 30 minutes.
So, Domino's is still not getting a 30-minute parking spot right in front of their door where they want it.
Not right, not right in front of their door, correct, correct.
But the 30-minute parking signs would be adjacent to each other. There'd be a 30-minute parking, 30-minute parking.
That's correct.
And the parking spot that's just north of that, is that adjacent to the Domino Pizza establishment?
It's right next to the Domino's, yes, yep.
And that's three hours.
The rest of Second Street is three hours, but yes, the sign, the sign differentiates between the 30 and the three hour, yep.
And there was no response from the other businesses in that, that are north of Domino's?
Nothing north of Domino's, no. Well, Reality Roasters, Reality Roasters is north of them.
Isn't there a dance studio there, too?
Yep, Stroya is farther there. They're the next one up.
And there was no response back, or?
Not from Stroya, no.
And I read it, and I know it's right in front of me here, but without scrolling, what was Reality Roasters' comment?
They did not want an additional 30-minute parking stall in front of their business. He said he was fine with it in front of Domino's, but not in front of, in front of his business.
So, if we added one, it would be in front of Domino's?
Correct. That would be where we would...
In front of Reality Roasters.
Correct, yep.
But we could change the one and add one.
It's up to the council. And if we go that route, we're going to need a rescinded motion. That's true.
Which would mean, Mr. Storey?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with the motion. I think if we just start out with another 30-minute parking, I think, you know, I'm not getting any, any resist, or, you know, any feedback from the petitioner, so it sounds to me like that would be acceptable.
I didn't know I was, that's not what I asked for. Two years ago, those were two 30-minute parking spots because it doesn't really fix the problem that's down top. You could definitely open that up for 30 minutes, but that's not actually what I asked for, so. The problem is that I have a lot of carryout customers, and they need to be there for a very short amount of time, and the three-hour parking lot, parking area definitely needs to be addressed because it's misused, and I'm not going to police the cops to do their job.
So, actually, what you're asking for is another 30-minute parking to the north of what you have instead of to the south of what you have, correct?
No, he doesn't have a 30-minute parking spot in front of his business.
I thought there was one in front of their 30-minute parking.
Exactly, no.
It's on the edge of his property.
Basically, more in front of the bakery than it is.
Except Pete Joyce.
On the side of the bakery.
Side of the bakery.
There are three signs that say 30 minutes. There are two in front of Dom, in front of Pete and Joyce, and on the backside of the side that's on Second Street, there's one, any parking, a handicap one that's put in about a year and a half ago. It used to be 30.
But does...
On my property, so.
Mr. President, would it serve you better to have one right in front of your property, though, versus having people having to walk that little distance, but...
Would it serve you better to put a sign that says 30 minutes in front of that building?
Yes.
That's what I've been asking for.
Then that's what we should be addressing.
Why isn't this working?
Currently have a motion to approve changing the handicap sign that is at the end of the block to another 30-minute parking. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
You voted against your own motion?
I, I seconded it because I wanted to be able to discuss it.
No. But I was asking Mr. Storey. He wouldn't rescind his motion and then voted against his own motion.
I, I understand, but once I got it cleared up, I thought there was a 30-minute parking already in front of Domino's, but apparently there's not.
Correct.
That, so that's why, and I, I was getting ready to pull that, but then we banned the vote, so I voted against it.
Mr. Cole, I think you're going to have to send us another request, and we'll get it right.
right.
Should I just put the two letters together and just paste it in an email?
Well- Scratch out your date. I, I don't know.
Councilman Hanson, I think because we turned down that motion, we could make a motion to put a 30-minute parking what he had requested. It's just whatever the city decides to do with that handicap parking is something that they would have to do. We could, there could still be a motion and a second to approve that 30-minute parking in front of Domino's, yep.
No, we, we voted down fixing that signage now, too.
Yes, we did. Do we have to wait for another meeting to bring that back up?
This request, no.
No.
We can make a different motion.
Okay.
We can make a different motion. We just turned down the motion to change the handicap sign to a 30-minute parking. We haven't voted on, on his original request. We can make the motion and, and second it and approve it still.
Well, let's either make a motion or move to the next item.
I think Mr. Cole needs a spot in front of his building so people can stop in. I'm gonna make a motion that we change one of the three-hour ones that are right in front of his building and turn that to a 30-minute parking spot.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Mayor Zilka. To install a 30-minute parking sign, one spot to the north of the current one that's there. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
That was easy.
New business. Accept recommendation-
Sorry for the inconvenience.
We're getting an education on the Robert rules tonight.
Accept the recommendation of the interview committee. Appoint Oliver Bridges Park Maintenance Worker, Street and Parks. Accept and approve. Greg.
Yeah, so we received, I believe it was 29 applications for our park maintenance worker. We interviewed six individuals for that position. Of the interview committee, we are recommending Oliver Bridges to the park maintenance position. The interview committee consisted of myself, Peter Belaski, and John Rodamacher. Oliver would be looking to start as soon as he's available, but right now it's tentatively, April 1st is when he'd be looking at, at starting. That would be subject to the completion of a background check, physical exam, and drug and alcohol testing, and then he would also be part of the local 49 union.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the interview committee, who has suggested many good employees in the past.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Starly. To accept the recommendation of the interview committee. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It passes. Accept the recommendation of the interview committees. Appoint seasonal summer employees. Accept and approve. Greg.
Yeah, we're looking at filling some of our vacant positions, seasonal vacant positions in the engineering and street department. The one for the, the engineering department, we are recommending Logan Schuet to be hired as the engineering aide at $9.86 per hour, and Steve Cameron, who is a returning employee for the streets department, we'd be looking at returning him at $10.08 for city seasonal work.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to accept and approve the recommendation from the committee to appoint the seasonal employ, summer employees.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It passes. Item C is to introduce ordinance number 14.
Let me give a quick, brief introduction. So the planning commission held a public hearing for rezoning of the parcel, which is highlighted behind me in green, which is R3. They are recommending approval of that this evening, so we've entered, we have the ordinance in front of you to introduce this evening to convert that from R3 to B2. The rest of the cemetery down here, as you can see, is B2, and so that would be consistent with that zoning, and the planning commission is recommending approval of that.
What is the wish of the City Council?
I'll make a motion to introduce number 14.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg to introduce ordinance number 14.
Introduction just requires one.
Does, okay.
Introduction, no second.
Okay, sorry. Amend personnel policies. We don't have to vote on it because it's just an introduction, correct?
Correct.
Amend personnel policies. Policy number 12, employee benefits. Adopt. John.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are following up with the process that we had with the MAP union no longer representing the supervisor employees of the city of Little Falls, aligning our policy and benefits so that they're, they're covered and that we make sure that those, those processes are correct moving forward. These did have references to the MAP union within our policies. They're now changing, modifying to reference the benefit structures of the other, other unions.
What is the wish of the City Council?
Motion to accept the amended personal policies, policy number 12 and 13. Are we just voting on 12 right now?
I believe we need to do them one at a time.
Just do, doing 12 right now.
Okay, and policy number 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Policy number 13, leave, holidays, vacation, sick and other. John.
So this is a policy that modifies the, the retiree leave in the court in Falls, it makes it consistent with our other policies on their vacation payout. Vacation pay is, is time earned, a benefit that's, that's earned and rel, and must be paid out in full, so it's just making sure that we're consistent with, with our other policies and making sure that we're consistent with law.
What's the wish of the City Council?
Mr. President, I move to adopt policy number 13 on leaves, holidays, vacation, and sick.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Starly. Discussion.
Are you adding a holiday into this agreement also?
No.
I see and read under, oh, that's just the data, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's, yeah, the dates of the, the changes.
And this, this is something that's been negotiated?
No, this was a, this was included in the, the previous one, policy that the employee benefits. It's moving it into the, the proper one. It is a, it's, it aligns with the other, other contracts, union contracts that we have. All vacation time is paid out at the end of employment.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Grant submittal initiative foundation childcare authorized slash approved. John.
Thank you, Council President. This is an application for a grant. This, these are funds from the Department of Human Services related to childcare. They've been each initiative foundation within the state. There, I think actually six of them that received funding, about $150,000 for, for grant dollars, put to those foundations in order to address the issues surrounding, surrounding childcare. So the initiative foundation here, based out of Little Falls, serving 14 county region, has a grant application open for this. It's something that I've been in discussion with the initiative foundation. I've been in discussion with providers, the licensers in the area that was served by Morrison County and now are served by Sourcewell, and including the school district and other, and other individuals that have been interested. We're, we've been working on trying to come up with solutions regarding the childcare issue. This grant will give us opportunity and access to dollars on a matching basis, up to 10,000, and this is something that has been addressed and brought up to our EDA, so I'm recommending that the matching funds come from the EDA to support this, this opportunity. This will bring together the stakeholders to come up with, with plan of action and ways that we can put those dollars into use with, when our, within our community. There's a number of different ideas that we've, we've discussed. They are very much draft ideas. A lot of the folks that are referenced in here are either people I've spoken directly about the issue or I know are part, members of, members of stakeholders that are going to take, take, take on and address this. It's certainly a, a major concern and has a deep impact to our, the economy in our community, the workforce recruitment that we have, and the families that, that simply live here. I will reference my story around childcare. When I came to the city of Little Falls in 2015, my son, who's four now, was only nine months old, and when we were in our smaller community before this, we had some trouble finding childcare. We started him in the only licensed provider in our entire city that would, that had an infant available, infant spot available. It was something that she hadn't done in a while. She hadn't cared for an infant in a while, and actually took, took him for three weeks and decided that was reminded of why she didn't want to care for infants, and, and dropped him. And sadly and unfortunately, that, that's a hard position to put any family in. You know, I went to pick him up one day and she told me, "Don't bring him back tomorrow," which is just, it's just heart, heart wrenching and, and really difficult for, for a family to go through that. We made do with some creative measures and other family members, and then I applied for the job here and ultimately took it, under the basis that I was assuming the, the childcare situation would be a little bit better here, being a larger community and access to more providers, and found out it was very much the same. Every individual that was taking care were, had waiting lists out that were one year, two years, or even farther. We, so with that, it didn't align that we could come together, that my family and I could move, move to our community because my wife, who also worked, we didn't have childcare. We did find a solution eventually back in my previous town, so for three months we lived apart until we found a solution that could work for us. Fortunately, we ended up finding a licensed provider, and he's been there ever since. So he's been with, with the same place for, for over three years now, which is fantastic, and his sister gets to go there as, as well. So it's, it's certainly, I, I can testify to it, going through that situation, it was, you know, it's a really hard position to put a family in, deciding to move to our community and having to live separately. I have a story of a family that had, both husband and wife had jobs, offers in Little Falls, had children, and ultimately declined those positions because they couldn't find childcare, because we have such a shortfall. And it's, and this, I've had conversations with providers that have no waiting lists. They don't have a waiting list because they're five years out on their waiting list, so by the time they'd have an opening, those kids wouldn't have a spot. Families I know that have planned pregnancies based on when they have availability for childcare. So it is certainly an issue that affects our community greatly, and I, I'm enthusiastic about this grant opportunity and very, and feel very strongly that we're gonna be a solid candidate for, for this grant application with the initiative foundation, and I really appreciate the time to be able to share my story on that with you as well.
What's the wish of the council?
Motion to authorize and approve for the grant submittal.
Is there a second?
Childcare.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Hanson. Discussion.
No, just real quick, Mr. President, I would like to say that normally this is something, you know, my, my knee-jerk reaction would be to go, "Well, why is that the city's problem?" But having heard John's story before, and there's another individual I talked to at, at Gulf League who didn't, yeah, I'm not gonna name names, but this individual, I believe, had three children at the same time needing childcare, and it took an hour before work time to get all three of the children to three different places before they could start work, and then reverse the process at the end of the day. So here, here's an example of something that normally I, I would say isn't within the purview of the city, but I've had my eyes open to the challenges out there. So with, with that, I'm, I'm for the city participating in some involvement in, in trying to rectify this situation.
And I know that we've had employees at work that have planned when they're gonna have kids around, when they can get an opening in daycare.
Mr. President, I think it is a city problem. What happens, anything that happens in this city is a concern of the council, but I've also heard from a couple daycare providers. One was the daycare provider of the year not that long ago, and she's retiring, and that's just gonna make it a little bit worse. And there's another one I know of, too, and it is a problem, and we need to get on top of this as a council.
All in favor?
Mr. President, I have one question. John?
Yes, sir.
We're just authorizing you to submit. You haven't been guaranteed this grant yet at all, have you?
No, it, no, the, the grant does need to be submitted to the initiative foundation, of which they'll review it and, and apply it. It is for communities. It's a community planning, planning grant, so it only is, is available to communities within the region.
And only upon receiving that is when you're gonna request to match the funds from?
Through the EDA, yes.
Through the EDA?
Yeah, so it, and it would be based on, on whatever the, the intent of the grant is that the, this group, group comes together, and it isn't specific to the ones that I listed, and, and other members could be, could be added to, for this discussion because we want to try to address as many stakeholders as possible. But it would be used for a project that would be identified out of that group to come with some solutions for this. I would say that this is just a, a small introduction piece. Right now, there are two bills going through the legislative session. One is for $3 million for training, training funding, and the other is for $10 million towards capital improvements. These would be dollars put into the DHS budget and also then probably administered or distributed out through initiative foundations because they have, all of the initiative foundations have early childhood initiatives, so it is, it is a resource that they, or a target that they have of an, of an issue. So it does, then, I think, sets us up well if we are awarded this and, and selected and can come up with plans and, and process to go after additional funds and resources which are truly needed in our community.
Okay, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Petition, storm sewer improvements, 1300 Block, First Avenue, Southwest, receive. Greg.
We received a petition for storm sewer improvements on the 1300 Block. Tonight, we're asking the council to receive that petition.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I move to receive this petition.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Starly to receive the petition. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2019-23.
Mr. President, can I ask a question first? Being as there's two council members absent, is that considered a no vote?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
We have three different options, 2019-23, 2019-23B, 2019-23C, authorizing participation in Green Step Cities program.
So are, are we making a motion and, and voting on all three of them, or one of the three?
One of the three. They're three differently worded ones in case someone would prefer one over another.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to adopt resolution 2019-23B. It's the, what I would say the least descriptive of the three as far as guidelines.
Is there a second? Motion by Mayor Zilka, second by Councilmember Hanson, to adopt resolution 2019-23B. Discussion.
I'm not saying I'm in favor or against it in this discussion, but I would like to see it postponed until the next meeting. For one reason is, we have two no votes to begin with. Second reason is, I wasn't here at the last meeting and I didn't get all the information from the public that I feel I can make a, a good vote. And the third was, there was some things that were stated tonight, and I'm not sure if it's fact or hearsay. I'd like to kinda check into it a little bit better before I can make a proper decision on that, so I'd like to see it postponed until the next meeting. And-
I think that speaks to the importance- I think that speaks to the importance of attendance to scheduled meetings. Two weeks ago, we had two people absent. This week, we have two people absent. What are we going to have in two weeks?
Mr. President, do you know when Mr. Knopfler will be back from his vacation?
April 9th.
So he wouldn't be here for the next meeting anyway.
Mr. President, I have some things that I want to discuss on this with some of the research that I've done into this. I've watched a YouTube video by a person by the name of Michael Shaw that was done in 2009. I've looked into Torn Republic, which is a Bribart, Breitbart public issue. I've looked into Freedom 21, Santa Cruz, Liberal Bias 100, American Policy Center with a Tom Dewis. I've studied a book by Glenn Beck on Agenda, this is referring to Agenda 21. I've looked at the Daily Beast, the Southern Poverty Law Center, and it seems to me that this Agenda 21 is, is based totally on whatever side of the fence you're, you're, you're There hasn't really been a whole lot on this since 2012, when the RNC decided to put it in to their platform in the 2012 election. The, the best information I actually got was from the Southern Poverty Law Center on Agenda 21, going back and, and showing when it was adopted in 1992, when the U.S. was with this and it was led by our President H.W. Bush. The only other thing I seen related to Agenda 21, it was updated in, in 2017, where it was revised to 17 goals by 2030, which was dealing with hunger, poverty, health, education, inclusion, economic growth, environment, infrastructure, and et cetera, et cetera. And then another opposing factor was the John Birch Society. There was some other stuff with polls in 2012 where 98% didn't even know enough about it, about the Agenda 21. And a lot of the information that I seen is most on, is, is based on conspiracy theories, where there's really not a lot of fact or truth, mostly opinions. And when, you know, with me, opinions, you know, they're not always the truth or fact because truth and fact don't need opinions. I did do some stuff in some of this related to energy and, and all this. The St. Cloud Area Joint Planning District Sustainability Framework Planning Committee had a lot of good information in there that was adopted in 2010. And they have, they have groups from the, from employers to residents to a whole bunch of different things into that group. 2009, they brought in the Emmons and Oliver Research Incorporated for consultation on it. And, you know, as, as the great law of the ear coordination once says, "In every deliberation, we must consider the impact of our decision on the next seven generations." So there's a coalition of groups from all the area with some good data. I don't, I haven't found any direct correlation between Agenda 21 and Green Step Cities. We got 127 cities in the Green Step Cities of Minnesota, and I haven't been able to, through several pages of information, I haven't been able to find one negative thing relating to Greens, Greens Center, Green Step Cities. There are a couple of issues that I have, that I, that I will not, I will vote no on this for now because I feel these resolutions are too lengthy and too hard to understand. I looked at one from Piers, that was nice, short, sweet. I'd like to maybe do something more related to that. And I wish our city attorney could be here so I could, so questions could be answered, so we're not put into a predicament that we're leaving for our children and grandchildren and great grandchildren that they can't get out of. So thank you for letting me express that concern.
Any other discussion?
Well, my, my opposition to this is less passioned than some of our guests. I look at it as something we simply don't need. I don't see a benefit. Eventually, we're adding up to 29 ordinances. I've done substantial research into this, probably a single topic. I've devoted more time to looking into this than anything else that's come before us, maybe with the exception of time spent on deliberating the DeRozier, the PUD project. I'd like to commend our city staff. As I look through the steps in the Green Step City, we're, we're doing this. Mr. Kimmon has had the rain gardens. We are doing LED lights in our parks. We're doing LED streetlights. Mr. Rodamacher worked at the golf course, and I'm, I'm sure he had a hand in it. I don't know Rich Fry to what degree, but I know we did a lighting project there. I've heard other conversations on, I know we did some upgrades. I can't remember the details at the, the police department. My point is, without signing on to this program, and I would agree, I don't see that there's a whole lot of strings attached at this point, but government and quasi-government agencies by nature grow. They don't retract. So what, what starts off as something simply seemingly benign now might not be so benign in the future.
And you drop out?
Or don't bother in the first place.
Well, and did anybody bother talking to any mayors that are members of Green Step City? Because...
I got the communication. Like I said, I'm not, I'm not...
I've talked to other ones. I just, I'm just asking a question because Royalton alluded to the fact of the connections that they've made as far as someone in forestry, because they needed it for, because Wright County was described as a county that had, I can't remember.
And Royal Ash Bor.
And Ash Bor. And so through their connections through that, they got, we're doing those things anyway. Why not have the availability of grand dollars? And once again, this is not Agenda 21. We are not tied to anything. And all it is, is just doing what we're doing. When we did, those things that we did, we did them for what reason? Cost savings? And so that's, that's all that I would vote on anything for. And if you ask Royalton, ask them how many ordinances they changed, my guess is none. Ask Piers how many they've changed. Royalton's been 2012, 2014. And I know we have all different views. I respect that. But the residents have heard what they heard on the radio, and that's the gospel to them now. So when this is voted down, the residents are going to believe all of that. And thank you for...
Well, I, and I totally agree. And I, I, I think this is a good program. I just not, I, I would like to see our resolutions and refined a little bit better, kind of read over how, how Piers has theirs. I think theirs is one, one page complete. And if we could get something down that's easy for me and the, and the citizens to understand, I would be in support of it. If we could get the city attorney here, which I've asked for in the past, so the questions could be directed to them and they can, they can be on, on, on record to show that we're not going to be liable for these other things that are being, being said. So I, I'm not opposed to this at all, Mayor. I'm just, I just would like to take a little more time to take a look at it and see if we can refine it a little better.
I would agree.
Because I do agree, I've read through a number of city, the cities through, through this Green Steps program, and every city that's in it is, seems to be very satisfied and, and glad that they've gone into this program.
I agree with you, Mayor, on the cost savings. I think we've done many of those things already. It does get you some recognition at the league meetings, but to me, that's not a reason to do it. A reason for me not to do it is, and we can order ordinance to not include their wording with the Kyoto Protocol, but I think anything to do with that, we should stay away from because I disagree.
Council President, I, I would reference that the mayor did propose 23B, which is the most reduced item in terms of a resolution. It does, does exceed one page by one paragraph.
I, I know that B doesn't include it, but the motion that they've put forward does include it? That's my concern, the one that they would prefer that we would pass. Any other discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
No.
Starley?
No.
Hanson?
No.
Gushig?
No.
Lundberg?
No.
Motion fails.
Resolution 2019-25, providing for the sale of bonds, Public Improvement 378, adopt.
Yes, before you tonight, we have Resolution 2019-25, which is providing for sale of bonds for last year's petition projects, the 2018 projects. Again, Jason Murray from David Drown Associates is here, who can review any questions you may have on the bond issue. It is 1.755 million, if I recall correctly, to finance the project from last year, so...
That's it, I have it in front of me, too.
That's yours.
Anybody have any questions?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2019-25, providing for the sale of bonds for public improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Discussion?
Does anyone have questions for Mr. Murray?
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushig?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-26, large scale street and sidewalk license, antiques and collectibles, West Side Improvement Association, adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. President, are they going to have a chance to tell us about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead. We're in the discussion part. Go ahead.
We've did this so many times in the past years.
That's fine.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Well, are we...
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Well, no, I, I just, they took the time to come here, and I think, you know, the majority of us were making the assumption that our attendees were here for one subject. So I mean, I, I personally don't want somebody who, who came for another reason to, you know, talk about your fair to not have your opportunity to promote your event.
You certainly can if you'd like to. Call or roll, please.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushig?
Yes.
Let's see, Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2019-27, large scale street and sidewalk license, arts and crafts fair, Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce, adopt.
Good evening. Being our event is a little bit more spread out through town, we just have a couple points we would like to make. My name is Deborah Bowles. I'm the president and CEO of the Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce.
And I'm Mary Bednarek. I'm the fair registrar with the Chamber of Commerce.
And this is our 47th annual fair. The application you have in front of you has the same footprint that we have used in the past. We are aware that we have Plan B and Plan C in the back of our minds because if road construction does not go as well as one would have liked, we need to figure out what we're going to do primarily on the west side of the river for the marketplace fair. And at that point, we would begin discussions with the West Side Improvement Association about sharing some park space or what other roads that might be available for us to keep it on the west side. But other than that, the artisan part of the fair would remain where it is. We do have the opportunity to use the parking lot on the west side of the government center, the new lot, so we will have a little bit of a different setup. But the streets closings, the park closings, and the parking lot closings all remain the
Any questions for them? What's the wish of the council?
Motion to approve Resolution 2019-27, large scale street and sidewalk license for the arts and crafts fair.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starley, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushig?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-28, establish fee schedule. John?
Thank you, Council President. This is the fee schedule updating for the golf course. Fortunately with the melting, I think that's getting closer, much closer for people's mind, like myself who play golf. Very small changes this year, a couple minor increases to our rates. We are really promoting the, the fund, excuse me, the fees that we have in their competitiveness with, with the rest of the region. We have looked at other courses within the region that have already announced their 2019 rates. This puts us right in line with, with what they have for the, for comparable golf courses. And hopefully with our, our memberships being active, more active to recruit additional members to our, to our golf course. So we can hope for better improved weather so that we can get some more activity in terms of revenue generation this April compared to last year, when I think the course didn't actually open until April, around April 28th. There were, I remember a couple of years ago, there was a year we were actually golfing by this time and had, were generating greens fees. So small changes, but really trying to continue supporting the golf course and promoting and, and the quality product that we have out here in the, the grand improvements that we, we have made to the conditions of the golf course.
What's the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution 2019-28, establish fee schedule for the golf course.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starley. Any discussion?
Yeah, really quick. I just, when it comes to, because we have different fees for resident and non-resident, and to me, that strikes me as something that might get a little cumbersome, given our staff. Is, is there any way to make sure we get that right? I thought about this in the past, and it might be too onerous, but I'm wondering if a, a resident that wishes, wishes to purchase a membership at the resident rate, would it maybe be wise to consider that those individuals come to City Hall to purchase it? And if you buy it at the clubhouse, you're paying the full rate? Just an idea, I'm not, yeah, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, when we, when we initiated that, we did, did take into consideration how to verify it. And it, and they, they do take the time at the golf course when they're filling out the member registrations to verify their addresses and confirm if they're city residents or not. There are a couple of properties specifically along Hilton Road, around the golf course, where one property's in the city limits, the next property's not in the city limits. And they, they do verify based on their parcel records and IDs if they're a little false taxpaying resident or not. The intent behind the resident break is because it is a municipal golf course and you're, the city, you know, city residents are taxpayers, that they should deserve some, some level of credit to the membership versus the, the ones that are not city residents that are, that also want to have membership for our golf course.
Might I suggest then, maybe Rob Orr sends out an email to the Canadian Cup members before that first league night, asking people to get in there sooner?
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, and I know it's, again, I'll touch on this. I just had met with Rich this morning discussing, they are working on the newsletter, and that will be going out here probably within a week or so. And that'll, will, I'll make sure that that's a... And that'll, will, I'll make sure that that's identified in there and communicate to the, to the league, the league presidents that they need to encourage their membership to, to getting those dues paid.
And I do appreciate you holding the line on the fees. Looks like the stuff that went up are just rounding to even numbers, basically.
I noticed that there's some special pricing for senior and military. I do not, I see some seniors on your, on your membership fees, but I, would that, would we be able to maybe sometime, maybe put specials in there for our military members also?
For our membership?
Membership fees?
That, I, that's something that we can consider. We do have a number of active military in the area that, that frequent our golf course, so...
He said what I was gonna say.
Resolution, call or roll, please.
Gushig?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starley?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.
City Council reports on city authorities, boards, bureaus, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have anything?
As a newly, new member to our Community Service Advisory Board, I would like to put a challenge out for our members to talk to the people in the community and look at those things for educational, for seniors, different types of programs that are out there for kids, sports, and see if we can get our membership and stuff up for those community services programs.
Any announcements?
Council President, I have one. I was fortunate enough to have the opportunity to go to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC. This was a partnership with Sourcewell because I, I'm a member of their Advisory Committee for city-county governments. They did invite and offer an opportunity for, for those members to attend this conference. Very, very unique opportunity. We're not National League of Cities members, but that, it was really, really awesome to get this, get to see that environment and get to, to hear the speakers. Actually had a number of keynote speakers that are working in the White House administration, talk about a lot of things that, you know, I, I think we, we see and address in our community. Opioids being one that was, was brought up frequently, as well as hearing, heard a presentation or a breakout on the opportunity zones and I wanted to speak to that for a second. We do, we were fortunate to be identified in our community with one of our census tracts by the governor, Governor Dayton last year as having an opportunity zone. And opportunity zones are areas in the country. There's about 8,000 designations throughout the entire country that now have the opportunity to have capital gains, capital gains earnings reinvested into an opportunity fund that can support projects within an opportunity zone and to get special tax breaks and credits. But it's, it's access to capital to do economic development work that has never been engaged before. They're still finalizing, IRS is still kinda finalizing, tweaking some of the rules. The presentate, there's kind of two, two halves of the presentation. One was about just the creation of it and its intent and what their, the IRS is still trying to do to, to help guide, guide the process. And the other was just, how do you, how do you make this work? How do you make this work in your community and make it do the things that your community wants to see happen? And they really touted coming up with identifying plans and identifying projects that, that our community wants to see. So I think that's something that we should really potentially look at engaging with community members that might be impacted or may be able to participate in an opportunity fund. I know not every, every person has capital gains income that they can reinvest into a community, but there are people within our area that do. So I think it's something that we really should try to, to reach out and, and start identifying and I, those projects that potentially could, could help. The opportunity zone itself is, we did apply, we actually did apply for, we had three, all, basically all this city was within three different census tracts that had factors that would have, that could have been approved by the, the governor. We applied for all three and we were awarded just one of them. And it encompasses pretty much the east side of the city, south of Highway 10, out to, you know, the commercial district around Walmart, down as far south as the airport and then back across and up alongside the river on the west side. So that would be the, you know, the territory roughly of, of where the funds could be used.
With nothing else, we'll adjourn at 8:45.